In their various locations.
Right, so it is, I have six o'clock right now. Um, Will, if you're listening, I'm gonna go ahead and start unless I hear something from you real quick.
Will is ready to go.
Okay, right, and I don't see anybody on the big screen right now. Does that make a difference?
In the top right-hand corner, you can push the, uh, there, I think it says speaker view.
I've got a mute. Um, well, here's more. Go. Switch camera, is that? Well, that didn't work. That just turned my camera around.
Go.
Share content, maybe?
No, try just clicking. Are you unable to see all of this?
I'm seeing, I'm seeing you right now on the big screen and on the bottom I see Greg and Bill. And see a window for Blaine.
So you have it set up to show you whoever's talking at the moment?
And that's fine. That's, that's how we have it set up, uh, to record and stream live as well. So that should be, everything Will's picking up should be good.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and start then. Uh, welcome to the March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, uh, city council meeting. We are doing it virtually this evening and this is the first time we've done it like this, so please be patient. Uh, as we all sort of learn together. Uh, Lisa, are, can you do roll call?
Yes, Mayor Bowman. Dave Bowman.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Judy Anne Files.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Doug Glassbell. Not sure we have Doug.
I've not heard from Doug yet tonight.
I don't think we have Doug with us. All other city council members are present except Doug Glassbell.
All right, at this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Blaine to talk about city's emergency response. We'll also, also be hearing from Bill Bell. Um, I guess Will, is there anybody in the audios right now?
I had audio on it too and then I hit something, fucked up the audio or video.
Yeah.
Yours is on a different time than mine and I didn't get video.
Oh, I had video and then I hit something.
Please mute your video, please, ever, your video.
Bill, I'm not hearing you. I see your mouth, but I don't see, I don't hear you.
Are you talking to me?
No, I was talking to Bill Glassbell.
Yeah, I just chat, I just texted him to tell him to mute his mic.
Okay. Um.
Now, now let's start over and ask if he has public comment.
Okay, is there anybody that would like to make a comment at this point in the meeting?
If, Dave, may I make a comment, please?
Yes, please, do.
Doug Glassbell is unable to get in, and so he wondered if Greg Story would call him and help him, which we just did Zoom earlier in the day. So Greg, can you help him some way?
I will, uh, give him a call.
Thank you. Do you need his telephone number?
Please.
Two, seven, five, nine, six, four, five.
Two, seven, five.
I'm sorry, I just hung up because I wasn't paying attention. I have nine, six, four, five.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I think we're waiting for Doug to, to chime in. If there's anybody else in the audience that would like to talk to council, this would probably be a good time.
One comment that I would like to add is that we had, we had noticed today that people are not understanding that there's a disconnect between the social distancing in workplace versus social life. Uh, my wife just went down today to the park and there were groups of fifteen, twenty people sitting around in the park in very close proximity. And yet we have employees in our workplaces that are not understanding and that are demanding a ten-foot separation. I think some clarity on that issue might be beneficial.
Would you go ahead and introduce yourself, just in case there's people out there that don't know who you are, David?
Thanks. I'm Dave Frank, um, city council candidate for District Four.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public that would like to say something? While we wait for Doug Glassbell to get, uh, online with us?
Hey, Rob and Shank, I see your mouth moving, but we can't hear you. So if you're trying to make a public comment, you get to start over.
Okay, Barbara Bynum. I just wanted to tell you guys, thank you. Thank you for everything that you're doing. Um, I'm sure you don't hear that enough in the work that, that you're doing for us, but a lot of people are very grateful for your service right now, and I'm one of those people. So I just wanted to tell you thank.
Thank you, Rob, and I think you kind of froze up, but.
Did you hear what I said?
I did. Thank you very much. And I, I know all the council appreciates that, all the staff does. People are working really, really hard right now and, um, I think we're doing a good job in Montrose.
Good job, you are, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, it's helping, helping, so you see someone talking, okay?
Well, Blaine, are you, can, let's just go ahead and start and, and hopefully we can catch Doug up. But we've got people wait, um, people waiting, so let's just go ahead and go with Blaine.
I'm on here now.
Oh, there he is. Hello, Doug.
Hello.
All right, everybody's here. Let's get, uh, a report from Blaine, please.
Great, um, hopefully everyone can hear me, uh, council and Mr. Mayor. So, uh, we just, uh, finished our five P M, uh, E O C briefing, uh, end of day briefing, and I don't have a lot of new information to report that's not already publicly, uh, available. Uh, C D P H G updated on their website, uh, here today that we now have three confirmed uh, COVID-nineteen cases in Montrose County. Um, I can tell you, I do expect that number to rise. Um, we have a hundred and thirty-seven people that have been tested in Montrose County. One hundred and thirteen of those tests are still pending. So I really want to ensure or communicate to the public that, uh, the, the low number of positive COVID-nineteen cases should not give anyone a false sense of security, uh, because, um, I do think that there will be more. And just to remind folks, uh, someone can be asymptomatic for, uh, eight or nine days, uh, essentially spreading this virus before they, they become symptomatic. And so, um, everyone needs to continue to practice the six-foot rule of social distancing. Um, the, uh, Colorado governor is, uh, recommending to people at least right now, uh, to enjoy the Colorado outdoors, but maintain the six feet, six-foot social distancing rule. Of course, the hand washing and things like that. Um, as I said, C D P H E has, uh, updated their, uh, website with three cases in Montrose. Um, so far, Montrose County has not updated their, uh, information to match that. Um, but I imagine, uh, that information is probably forthcoming to, to the public. Um, internally, uh, this is the first full day of, of closed to the public city operations that, uh, that we've had. Uh, it seems like it's going really well. It seems like uh, the, uh, remote Zoom meeting, um, situation is kind of like what we're doing here is, is actually working very well and, uh, at least internally from the P D staff, uh, things are, things are moving along. Uh, we are at a, uh, um, lower level of, of proactivity. And, uh, we're trying to limit our social contact with others, but the police department is still open. Um, to phone calls to the public, um, and, uh, we still respond to critical, um, uh, life emergency events. One, uh, two more last things, uh, that the governor today, uh, gave out some guidance. These are not directives, but guidance, first of all, to law enforcement officers or agencies and to, um, jails to, uh, start limiting their contact with the public and to ensure that arrests that are made are mandatory in nature, uh, things like domestic violence protection order, violent felony type of arrests. And so Montrose Police Department started doing this about a week and a half ago. And so we really don't need to change our operations there. Uh, the Colorado governor also sent out, um, some guidance to grocery stores to start adding hours and then, um, adding staff if they could for, um, essentially, uh, uh, remote deliveries, um, and, um, remote grocery pickup outside of the store to limit, um, that in-store, uh, gathering situation and then also expand hours specifically for high-risk populations like seniors. And I do know that, um, locally, um, City Market Target Walmart, um, at least, and I'm probably missing a few, have already adopted uh, that guidance and, uh, are following suit with that. So with that, I can, I can take any questions.
Paul Arbogast, I saw that you had a question that was on the screen, um, if you want to ask that. Anybody from the audience that would?
Yep.
Yeah.
Dave, you know, is the government gonna, governor or the state gonna do any kind of incentivization program for the grocery stores to help them offset the cost of these new employees?
You know, I, I don't know that. Um, I will probably leave the economic update side to, uh, to the city manager and probably to Chelsea. So maybe more to follow on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief Paul, do you have the normal number of officers on duty? Are you guys kind of proceeding as normal in terms of, I mean, you just talked about how you were adjusting some of your procedures, but has anything else changed substantially? Would the public see anything different happening out there on the streets?
No, uh, they won't. So, uh, we have the standard complement of officers right now on the street. Uh, if, we do have a plan, if officers get compromised and have to quarantine at home. Uh, we have a staff reduction plan and it's things like our detectives are working from home right now so that we can ki- kind of keep them as an additional reserve force should some of our officers get compromised and then we need to have them suit up in uniform. So, but right now I think we're in a, in a pretty good place. We're encouraging our officers to, um, not, uh, not remain a hundred percent in the P D, but do a lot of directed patrols. Um, because I think especially in this time, it's really important that the public, um, sees our off, officers out on the street.
And the animal shelter while closed to the public still has staff there taking care of the animals, right?
We do. So two components to the animal control shelter. Uh, first of all, we have staff, um, inside the shelter, even though it's closed to the public. There's maintaining care for all of the animals, um, that we're housing currently. Secondly, our animal control officers that patrol the street are still doing that. Uh, we're trying to limit some of the human-to-human contact that they have, but they're still responding to vicious animal calls, to, uh, injured animal calls, things like that. They will take strays really on a case-by-case basis. Um, if, uh, if the animal certainly is in need or is starving in some way or has some significant injury, then they're gonna go ahead and take that animal, um, into the shelter or to, uh, to the vet first to get it cared for. Um, we're really trying to balance right now, because we are close to the public, um, the need, uh, for space within the shelter so that when we do have an emergency situation like an animal vicious or an injured animal, that we have space within the shelter, um, to be able to house that animal. So just, uh, random strays off the street, we are not picking those up currently. And, uh, we're, we're really trying to manage that situation carefully because when we run out of room, we have really, uh, nowhere else to go because many of the same shelters across the state are, are following the same, same principles. And these are, these are, uh, uh, best practices that we received. Or that we're following.
Paul Arbogast had a question and, uh, his mic is not working, so I'm gonna relay that for him. Uh, for those of you who didn't see it, but, uh, he says, would need to work up to a state and federal level, but what about the idea of allowing support for local business via donation being allowed to be written off like they are for nonprofits to help promote direct support to businesses affected by the shutdown?
Yeah, once again, I think that's probably out of my lane, so maybe that might be a better question asked here in a little bit once the city manager gives his update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a Dave Bowen.
No, the other one is Dave Bowen.
Hey Keith Carey, would you mind muting your mic, please? Mayor or council, do you have any more questions for me?
I do, thank you very much for that update.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
No, I'm good. Uh, thanks for the update too, that was good.
So, Bill Bell?
Uh, before we jump into my stuff, does everyone on council feel that you're getting enough information from Blaine and I uh, regarding forwarding E O C updates and just stuff on the public health and safety side of things? Are you getting enough, uh, updates from us?
Yeah, I feel like I am.
Me too. Good, great. So I can jump into a little bit of the, uh.
Yeah. Please keep forwarding the state and county emails.
I'm sorry, Barbara, you kind of broke out on that. Could you say that again?
I just said, I asked if you guys could keep forwarding the emails that you're getting from, whether it's the county or the state, that kinds of things that are not within the city's purview, but you're passing on to us so we know what's happening at the, the county or state level. I appreciate those updates. Thank you.
Thank you. And you know what I might be able to do, uh, you know, on a, on a daily basis is maybe just a kind of a recap. Uh, if there's anything that's major and, and I can send it to Bill and, and then go from there. If that's something that's valuable to you.
And I've been trying to do that, Blaine, every couple of days, but we can definitely, that's why I was asking, we can add more of those daily type summaries. But anytime there's a new governor's order or something, I've been trying to keep them in the loop that way. Which is almost every day, it seems like right now.
Well, they, they come out very fast and so we're trying to keep up on them to make sure that you all get them in a timely fashion.
Yeah, Blaine and I are learning quickly that this governor moves very fast on things. And not everybody, not everything is an executive order. There's also other things like guidance, strongly encouragements, and then we have the C D P H E orders and their stuff we're trying to follow too. And then, uh, Blaine's doing a great job on all of those things. So just want to say thanks to Blaine and his team of commanders who are back in the P D while he's working on all the bigger picture stuff. So they did a great job over there.
Thank you.
So just, uh, update on city operations. We, we, uh, went to tier four recommendations. Yesterday was the transition period. Uh, the governor gave his directives this weekend and gave a one-day transition period for everyone. And so today is when we, like Blaine mentioned, really went to that. Uh, it is working well. It's difficult and I think some of the departments, uh, are finding it more difficult than other departments continue the level of service they're used to, to the citizens. Uh, we have some great department heads who have some good supervisors in their departments that really pride themselves on the quality of their service. And so, uh, over the next week, they'll really fine-tune those, uh, practices and, and, uh, they're realizing that everything can't be done as perfect as they want it to be done, but we can still make things happen for the community. We're also asking our contractors out in the community and our outside partners who work with our staff, especially in the area of building and planning services, uh, to be a little more flexible, uh, moving forward, they're gonna need to be flexible just like we are. And, um, we're all trying out new electronic ways to do inspections and, and how to limit our site visits with a big group of people. Maybe time the site visits after people have left and stagger who, who goes from engineering or public works or building and planning services. So, uh, we just ask everybody to be patient with us. Our goal is to keep our operations going, uh, just in a different fashion than they were going two weeks ago. But, uh, we're, we are able to provide almost all of our essential services uh, and even our non-essential for a lot of things. And, uh, we're gonna continue to try to do that. Knowing that if the governor comes out with more orders or, or directives that tell people they need to stay in their homes and really not go out, then that'll change the game for us as well. But right now, we're promoting, uh, people to do things outdoor, outdoors on an individual basis. Uh, keep the social distancing. We're trying to provide services, doing the same thing as employees. We have, um, can answer any questions on any of the divisions we've had. We have all that on the website. Uh, we've sent that out to all of our employees and council members so we can answer questions when they arise out in the public. And, uh, the website, the COVID-nineteen webpage resource we have is really informative and has a lot of those answers for people. Uh, the biggest change yesterday, uh, to today was instead of working behind glass, uh, we now are not doing inter, any interaction personally with the public. And so, uh, we moved the customer service technicians who would normally handle utility billing. They're doing that from their homes and we're staggering, uh, some of the finance personnel. So one might come in and cut checks on Thursday, but they would be the only one out in city hall, uh, running around and then we would sanitize after they're here. And that way they could cut checks and get all of our accounts payable processed. And then another day, we might have, uh, sales tax, uh, receivable person come in and, and do her work. And then Shaney and I and Stephen and Blaine are here part of the time in the office and part of the time at home. So we're trying to lead by example and not be here at city hall all of the time either. Uh, but we're finding that a lot of our work is easier to do over the computer and over the internet than our frontline employees. It's much more difficult for them. But spirits are up. The employees are doing a great job being creative and, and, uh, coming up with a lot of really solution-oriented ideas. So I'm really proud of the work everyone's doing. Any specific questions from city council or anybody from the public who's on the line about our change in operations?
Just a comment, I guess, Bill. Um, I think it's real important and so I fully support, um, the steps that you're taking. I know that many of them are dictated by our governor and, uh, it's just necessary for all of us to follow these guidelines. So thank you for looking out for the safety of our, of our, uh, city staff as well as the whole community.
Bill, I know I don't have a great connection, so I typed my question also. But I just want to know a little bit more about building services. And are we, I, I would hope there's so many construction projects going on around town. Are we able to do those site inspections and building permit inspections still?
Yeah, that's a good question. That's probably who we've heard from the most are contractors who are out trying to uh, keep up with their work and, and build things. And fortunately for us, we had a booming economy, uh, here in Montrose and it's still booming despite the COVID, uh, on the construction side of things. So I think as long as our contractors are allowed to work, they're gonna continue to do that. So, uh, Ann is overseeing, uh, Archie and the Building Services Division. Uh, Archie has talked to us and come up with ideas on how they can do virtual inspections. And so they're working with the contractors, uh, to video certain things and they can inspect easy things like drywall and insulation that are much easier to do over the, over the computer uh, or the phone. Uh, but there will be some onsite inspections that'll have to be necessary and for those types of things, they're trying to work it out with the contractors where rather than the group of contractors be there at the time of the inspection, they would set up a, talking with my hands over that thing, yeah, sorry, um, instead of, uh, yeah, they would spread out and so there's, uh, maybe our staff is the only one there and, and they can video and record what they're looking at and then take notes and share that with the contractor. Also, we're doing definitely everything that's outside, so foundations, the framing of new construction. Under the governor's order, he listed a few types of businesses as critical and, and he labeled, uh, critical infrastructure for our state. And one of the big ones was housing construction. And so the exemptions are there to protect those industries that are deemed critical in Colorado and housing happens to be one of those. So we're gonna do everything we can to keep the housing construction in our community going. And, uh, obviously it'll be prioritized based on time of application, but I know a flood of applications for permits went in just before we, uh, changed over. So at the end of last week. And I know Archie spent all weekend getting those hammered out and turned back to the contractors uh, before he knew the division was gonna have to work from home. So a lot of that was done prior to today. And we'll just keep that moving forward. There will be some delays. I mean, there's no way around that. Uh, it might, instead of doing it all every day of the week, they might have to arrange onsite once a week, that type of thing. So, um, I think the important message is we're moving those things forward. It'll just be done a little bit differently. I mean, it just requires a little bit of patience.
It sounds like you've put together a great plan and staff is enacting that. Um, makes me feel real good that our city is moving even in this intense time. It's a good job.
Bill, I've got a comment. I know that with our building inspections, uh, we also have to interface with state on, I believe, electrical and plumbing. Is that being phased in some way also?
The state handles the electrical side of things. If Ann's on, she might have more details on that than I do. I haven't talked to Archie at all about, uh, how he's interfacing with the state inspectors. But I can get that information for you unless Ann knows.
Yeah, and if you can hear me, this is Ann Morgan Thaler, Assistant City Manager. I see nodding, so I think you can hear. And Archie met with some of our state inspectors today, actually, in order to see how they're proceeding with inspections at this time. They are also trying to work through a virtual process using some video equipment. It didn't go a hundred percent well today, so there are some kinks to work out on there. It didn't go a hundred percent well today, so there are some kinks to work out on their side too, but. We're all working together to try and keep these projects moving. In a way that's safe for the contractors, safe for staff and for our community. So we'll keep working with them and. Like Bill said, we're trying to be flexible and we thank the contractors for being flexible too. Archie heard from a lot of people yesterday and today. And people seem to just be happy that we're able to keep these projects moving and we're open to any and all suggestions that people have too.
Thank you.
I can comment on a couple more things that have come up, questions regarding operations. One of the things we're keeping moving is street sweeping. And it's kind of our one person, one truck policy. So any piece of equipment where there's one person that uses it. And isn't sharing that, we're trying to keep that going. So street sweeping is a great example. Street sweeper, one operator gets into. His own vehicle, does his work and then goes home. The same thing with our golf course maintenance crews and our parks maintenance crews. They're going to be able to drive in, get on their mower, go out, perform their duties and then go home. And so they don't need to work in close teams. They can do individual work assignments. And so we're, we're able to keep up with things. Especially when it's starting to become the growing season and as soon as water is turned on, things grow very quickly around here. So. If you don't maintain the turf, especially at the golf course and baseball fields, for example. They die and it costs, a golf course costs millions of dollars to get that back. So. It's very important that we keep up the level of maintenance. But we close down things that we don't have to, to do, such as the pro shop. And cart rentals and those types of things. So those have been closed down to the public. But at the current time, unless the governor changes things, we're encouraging outdoor recreation. And so the golf course is open to the public. And we just ask them to be respectful. The maintenance staff's there, but they're not, they're under direction not really to interact with the public. They're there to maintain things. So we ask people to be patient with each other. And be respectful to one another while they're using the course. And that goes for any kind of our recreation, whether you're on our trail system. Give people their space when you're out and about on the trails. Pick up after your pets, those types of things. If you're up using the soccer fields or the ball fields right now. That's okay. You just don't want to be in an enclosed area like a dugout. Or on the playground. We've asked people not to use the playgrounds as much as possible because they do harbor germs. So we put up some signage saying if you absolutely have to use the playgrounds, we, we know we can't control everyone's behavior. But be smart about it and sanitize your hands before and after using it. And we strongly encourage you not to use it, but we know we can't be there to enforce every single playground. We have quite a few of those in the city limits.
Yeah, I can add, Bill. I was at the golf course today. People are playing. Things look. Like they're going really well out there. There's still a lot of water line construction going on too. So. Kyle and Dominic are getting things watered and. Doing the improvements that we need done at the golf course and they're. I see them working and staying away from each other while they're working opposite ends of big pipes and, and. Lot of good construction going on out there. But from what I can see from the people, everybody's is very happy that the golf course is open. And everybody's cooperating with Tom Young. On a beautiful day like today, there's no reason we can't have people out there and. They certainly were there today.
That's good to hear. I would say almost everyone's cooperating with Tom Young. He did vent about a couple of people today. You're always bound to have a couple grumpy people when you make big changes like this. So.
Of course, of course. Overall, the people that are out there are smiling and. Staying away from each other, but talking to each other and. The adults seem to think it's great that we have so many kids and teenagers out there playing together. I can see that even the young people are staying away from each other as they play golf together, which isn't difficult to do.
When you mentioned waterline repairs, that reminded me to, to mention that our water and sewer crews are working on an on-call basis. So. We're still responding to water breaks and sewer backups, all those types of things. So. That's important for people to know. Just call like you always would. Your phone will be routed to the right place. And then the same for trash pickup. No hiccups in our trash and recycling service. Again, a one person, one truck philosophy. So it's very safe for our employees to pick up trash. We have changed our collection facility to a temporary location next to Kinniken. On Park Avenue rather than inside the workshop. Because there aren't people there to check you in and out at Public Works. So we ask people to drop your green waste off, which is actually where we used to collect green waste, right on that corner. Empty lot there. And then Jim and a, and a couple of people will be checking on that periodically throughout the week. We know it's a busy time for that. People are doing trimming and, and spring cleanup and that kind of stuff.
Speaking of utilities, can you kind of clarify or elaborate on? What the city is doing for our residents in terms of late payments they may need to be making on their residential bills?
Sure. So we are not doing any shut offs at all for delinquencies. We ask that the customer contact our customer service technicians like they normally would regarding their bill. And we'll enter into payment arrangements with them. We can do all that over the telephone. And we even have some creative ways to take your, your, to provide an electronic type signature that legal gave us for people. So. We can do all that over the phone. If people need to make their payments, we're really encouraging online payments. And or over the phone by giving your credit card number. But if you absolutely have to pay with a check, you can use the Dropbox locations that we have at the grocery stores. And, and we're continuing to check those throughout the week.
Do we still have a drop off location in Centennial parking lot that you can drive through and. And just drop it in that box? Is that still there?
I'm going to let Shaney address that question. I think we weren't. People to use that, but she can clarify that if I'm wrong.
No, that's very much being used. So we are getting the mail every day and processing payments that are in the Dropbox in Centennial Plaza as well as the Tuat City Market. Did everybody hear that?
Thanks, Shaney. Did I miss anything else on utility billing?
No, I think you're good. Sorry, I muted.
One other thing we can talk about, which will kind of lead us into the business side for Chelsea's report, but. Our code does allow us to. Do sales tax remittance deferrals. And so Shaney and I looked this weekend over the list of all of our sales tax vendors. And from talking with. A few business owners in our community. And then amongst ourselves as a staff and, and looking through that and conversations with. At least one council member who called and asked about it. We have. Will be notifying all of the small businesses in our community that have under gross sales of two million dollars. That their sales tax remittance will be deferred for at least ninety days. Council will be able to extend that, depending how long this, this pandemic period goes. But. We wanted to start with something that was not too short in timeline, but not too extended either. We're still want to be fiscally conservative. So we think ninety day deferral is fair to everyone. And it's for those small businesses, again, that have gross sales under two million dollars. And from. What we, we came up with that number based on discussions we had with some small businesses in our community on. What's a good threshold to use for that? And when you look at our vendor list, it separates out the big box stores. And the really large sales entities. Separates them from our small businesses. And our small businesses are the ones that are struggling much more than the corporate businesses in our community. And that allows us to help the small businesses, but it also. Protects our ability to provide necessary services to the community. Like policing and building and planning services that we just talked about. Those are, that come from sales taxes. And so. If we were to allow every business in our community to defer. We wouldn't receive any tax money over the next ninety days. And it's important to keep our business operations running. So. That's what we've decided to do. The code allows us to do that, allows the flexibility to do that. And then. I don't really feel comfortable deferring more than ninety days without council then stepping in and making that decision to extend. And we've done deferrals in the past when people call in and they have a hard time paying their bill. Shaney's team works with them on payment arrangements and those types of things. So. Deferral isn't anything new for us, but doing a blanket across the board, even before you ask, deferral is. And it's important that I mention, you still need to, as a business, turn in your sales tax paperwork. You just don't have to send the money with it because it's important that Shaney and her team can track that and make sure that we have good record keeping moving forward. Did I miss any of that?
The only thing I want to add is that we, you, you are required to continue to collect sales tax from the customer. That was one of the online questions today, and I want to make sure that that's clear. We're not getting rid of sales tax.
I had a question because we collect sales tax on behalf of the county and the state. And I know in the governors. About working with local governments to defer the sales tax remittance. So I assume the state's okay with us not giving the state their part. Is, are we working with the county and, and do we collect the county's? Part and usually give it to them? And are they on board with this plan?
We, we only collect construction use tax for the. Sorry. I lost that.
You're back now.
We only collect the construction use tax for the county. So that's only with a building permit.
Otherwise, we collect for the Recreation District, the point three. Point five eight public safety sales tax and then our general sales tax.
Correct.
And we have talked to the Recreation District, some board representatives as well as staff. Yesterday, we had a meeting with them over lunch and they're fully on board with this decision. And they'll be looking at their budget, just as the city's looking at our budget on ways we can conserve our resources. Or limit projects for the remainder of the year.
Question please. I, I just want to make it clear that they're going to collect the sales tax. They still eventually need to pay up the city. This is not that we're forgiving it. They have to collect it and they have, at the end of, whenever, whenever they're ready, they pay it back to the city.
Correct. It's only a deferment. They'll eventually need to establish a repayment arrangement with the city finance department.
Thank you.
Any other questions before Chelsea steps in and talks about business promotion and those types of things? Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
That all sounds good. Let's hear from Chelsea on the business side, please.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Great to see everybody this evening virtually. We've really taken the position at the city of Montrose to try to work on the economy. You know, the county is very focused on the health aspect. And really trying to keep the public safe and we're definitely trying to help in that. But. At the same time, we see ourselves as really having the role to keep the local economy going. And make sure that our small businesses can remain until after this pandemic. So I'm going to be sharing my screen here in a moment to talk about a few of the things that we're doing to make that happen. And Bill talked about one of the things with the sales tax deferral. You all will be considering another one of the business items. This evening, but I will talk tonight a little bit about what we are already doing. And so give me just a moment and you'll be able to see. This thing here. Give me just a second. All right. Can we all see that? Give me a thumbs up if you can see that. Cool. All right. So we have organized several different social initiatives here in Montrose. The first one is that every Wednesday at eight thirty A M, we're having a Zoom call just like this one that has a business update. It was focused last week on some federal programs, unemployment programs, and some of those things will definitely be mentioned. On the call tomorrow and in coming weeks, but we're really going to move to a local focus. And so anybody can join. This call is for business owners, but also those in the community who want to help support local business. Or contribute ideas to how we can support local business and the economy. Tomorrow, we're going to have myself, Bill Bell, the city manager. And partner in Delta, speaking about some of the industry cluster groups that we've already started to form. To talk about how each industry can work together in recovery from this and then. Talk a little bit more about things moving forward there. Every Friday is a social movement. So Montrose Diens in with Takeout Night. This encourages locals to get takeout. Or delivery on Friday nights or any night really, but we're really trying to make that social movement on Friday nights. To keep those restaurants going as long as we can. Again, we want to practice safe social distancing in these instances, ensure that we're doing hand washing. Before we enter restaurants, after we enter restaurants, or after we receive delivery for our food. Saturdays, we're bringing back Small Business Saturday for the duration of the COVID. Pandemic. And so we're trying to get the local. Citizens to buy local. So this can be services, this can be online shopping, this can be delivery. Any local store, buy local, one product. If we can all commit to buying one product or service every Saturday. That's what we're asking. And so while we're doing this, we're asking everybody to post photos to social media and use the hashtag. We are Open Montrose. We are monitoring all of that on social media. And then resharing to try to again, just create that social movement. And then finally, and this one's going to be a little bit more difficult now with the recent employer mandates from the governor, but. We're trying to create or maintain a lunch crowd. So if we have businesses that are still open and operating, maybe once a week. You know, work with your staff to order lunch from one of the restaurants that's open. And we, we were doing it at the city as long as we were open. And we each paid individually for our food and got that out to staff. And so it was working really well. And I know that the businesses. Really appreciated it. One thing that we haven't quite announced yet, but I think it's safe to let everybody know, we're going to be working on a. Cooperative marketing effort. And so we're going to have some small grant type. Monies available for businesses. What we're going to be asking is for businesses to partner together. So three businesses partner, partner rather, together on a marketing initiative. And we will look at granting them money to either advertise on the radio, in print, on social media. Create a video or something like that. So more of that is to come. We plan on releasing press on this. And everything will come out on social media and also be shared via email channels. So. Get updated on all of that. And one thing also to mention, please follow Dart. If you're a social media user for all of the updates about business, the city channel is also carrying a lot of this stuff. And we are really working on heavily marketing it. So we've got the, all the social movements are on the radio, they're in the newspaper, they're in the mirror. We're running them with promotions on social media. And so hopefully the word is getting out. Even saw Eldorado Financial had it up on their sign. This week. So that's what we're doing right now and taking more ideas every day.
That sounds great. You guys have put together a, a great. Marketing plan and it's, I think it's just so great. The city's taken such a big interest and commitment. To keeping as many businesses open as possible. I am seeing through social media that some of the restaurants are having a. A fairly successful dinner hour by doing big family meals. I saw the vine sold out of their lasagna last night. So there's a lot of good things happening and. My message of the community would be, please, what you're doing now, keep doing it. Support our businesses. I know not everybody can afford to go to a restaurant, but if you can, please, let's keep those businesses alive.
Thanks, Dave. And I did want to add, we are adding industries to the discussion each week. And so I know this is the restaurant industry. And some of the small retailers, but we're looking at everything from, you know, construction to the hair salons and all of that in ways that we can help these different. Clusters in the industry. So more to come on that, but thank you. And yes, I echo.
Great. Great.
May I ask a question, Chelsea? Is it okay to have the food trucks now?
Yes, as far as we know, the food trucks can remain operational. We just have to keep six people or less, um, when they're gathering around the window and that type of thing. But yes, food trucks are operational and I have seen them running specials. Um, you know, the delicious food truck is partnered with Storm King on some specials and that type of thing.
Today and down at uh, the water sports park, there would have been a big demand to have a food truck down there today if nothing else, just to do drinks. Would it be nice if somebody would come down there because there are so many people using the parks and using the trail? But just an idea. Thank you.
Great to know I can pass that along.
Judy Anne, I'm glad you brought up the sports park, the water sports park. This is Bill from Montrose Kayak and Surf. And first of all, I want to express thanks to all you guys for your hard work. And I know you're putting in some extra hours to do what we got to do here. Um, just want to let you guys know that we're moving um, forward business as usual to get ready for the summer season with the hopes, you know, this will all be quickly behind us. And we know that our locals and what tourists we can start bringing back to the area, our water sports park is going to be a viable component for uh, recreation and an outlet for a lot of pent up stress when we're all allowed to get out there and start doing our thing again. So just again, wanted to say thanks for Montrose Kayak and Surf and um, we're looking forward to getting everybody in the water when we can.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add a clarification on what she was talking about? Um, Chelsea mentioned uh, no more than six people at the food truck. But I think you're talking about the six foot rule of separation. I don't think there's a rule of having six people. Um, so we just want to make sure when they're there, they're not in gatherings and that they're more than six feet apart when they're waiting in line. And we've seen some innovative ideas from Denmark and some other places on how in the grocery stores, uh, coming down from the governor's office, his most recent thing is be smart and safe in the grocery stores. I think that applies to all of our restaurants, outdoor venues, the food trucks, it doesn't matter, just stay six feet apart from the person next to you. Uh, I know it's hard to do, but we're really, really uh, encouraging that piece. And that's the only way to really make it as successful as we can and keep these businesses open as long as possible.
Hey, Bill, I have a, a question. Um, the restaurants that have liquor licenses, if you order takeout, uh, can they also sell you a drink that you can take home in some manner? I think the governor mentioned that and I'm not sure how that's working here in Montrose. I haven't tried it yet.
They have, and we have Stephen and, and Blaine too, but the, the rule allows a closed container to be sold. So if they have a full liquor license, they can sell you uh, something that's in a closed container. Uh, so you don't walk away with open container in your vehicle. That's my understanding. Um, but it's, a lot of money is made by selling alcohol, you know, with our food establishments. I'm guessing that's what drove that decision. Um, I don't know if Blaine and Stephen have anything more on that one.
Okay, thank you.
I should mention on that topic, the distillery has come up as well. Um, they're doing um, they're bottling some, what they make there and mixing it together and selling it. And we're interpreting that to be okay uh, right now under the current advice from the governor. But as with any of these things, that could change tomorrow.
I guess I'd also like to give a shout out to the distillery. They're also making hand sanitizer. Um, so if you do go in and, and make a purchase at the distillery, they'll give you a free little bottle of uh, hand sanitizer that they made right there. Yeah, in fact, we'll, we'll show you the bottle here.
I didn't know that. That's good.
Yeah, also, Dave, to your point with that, David Fishering is going to be on the business update call tomorrow to talk to businesses about ideas to adapt during this time. So they've done a great job of adapting and he's going to give some advice on that on the business call.
And I guess if, if you're seeing me, this is what the uh, hand sanitizer looks like.
Awesome. Also, it was pointed out by uh, Robin that the farmer's market's still operating. Uh, ag-related farmers markets and, and um, produce stands and those types of things was also listed in the governor's as a critical business. And so just like a grocery store, uh, you can go to the farmer's market, they still need to follow the six foot separation rule, which uh, they'll figure out how to do. I know they're planning on operating out in Centennial Plaza. They weren't allowed to do that in our building anymore, so they're moving it outdoors and uh, hoping that the weather cooperates for that. But as long as it's outdoors and they're separated by six feet, uh, it, ag-related businesses are part of those critical uh, businesses to our state.
I appreciate that the city has allowed some of our gyms that are closed by the governor's orders to move their classes outside and use city parks, which is um, not normally something a business could use apart to run a for-profit class. But my understanding is we're, we're allowing them to do that now, under the circumstances.
Great. Good idea.
We're hoping people don't drop their gym memberships. We're hoping everybody stays uh, with their gyms, whatever gym they're part of, uh, whether it's the uh, the rec center or Gold's or any of the other ones in our community. And just providing them those outdoor venues is a way they can make sure that they keep their business running. And Chelsea's coordinating that effort, I believe. I do have a few more things uh, that Anne wanted me to mention on food distribution. Is that all right, Mr. Mayor, if I add some of those things?
Yes, please do.
So I'm just going to read this here. Um, Anne's been, her team is really great and Bethany is one of our newest employees as our community engagement specialist. And Commissioner Sue Hanson, one of her priorities was working with nonprofits during the crisis to make sure that everybody's working together and doing some of those things, uh, whether it's daycare, childcare, all those types of things in the community to support people who are still trying to work. But also, uh, there was a need to talk about how to get food to either homebound seniors who no longer are, are supposed to be out and about. Uh, the senior center closed down and just a lot of seniors are trying to stay homebound as much as possible and might need meals delivered to them. All points is helping in that regard. Uh, Bethany is working with the Montrose Recreation District uh, and the school district to get food out to the kids and their families. And so uh, starting last week, the numbers are growing. But as of right now, the Montrose Rec District has been delivering meals, putting their staff to work since the rec center's closed. And today, there's a hundred and twenty uh, school age students signed up to receive home meal delivery. In addition to the approximate seven hundred meals per day being served at the school locations. So they're serving both at the schools and distributing it uh, to the kids uh, at home. Uh, the school district won't be providing these meals during spring break. And so Kendall Kramer and Bethany and other city staff are working with the recreation district and some other nonprofits to try to fill that gap over spring break. And I have no doubt that they'll figure out how to do that uh, in the next week. And then uh, we'll be updating the community resources page, uh, which for everybody's benefit is www dot cityofmontrose.org slash COVID nineteen. And that's really the go-to webpage for us. All of these things can be found there. And we're fine tuning that webpage uh, as we speak. So we're hoping by Wednesday or Thursday, all of that information will be in, in more user-friendly format. Beginning, it was all just thrown up there. And then there's been a lot of requests to fine tune it, make it easier to read, easier to find based on what you're looking for. So I know a few staff members are working on that piece. And um, Center for Mental Health and the um, a few other groups are also partnering to make sure that there's mental health uh, assistance in our community. It's a difficult time for a lot of people. Uh, whether you have mental health issues, any uh, all of the time, or if it's caused by loss of work, or now you're stuck home with your family a lot more than you were before. Those are all legitimate things. If you're not used to those things, it's a change in your life. And so uh, mental health's really important right now in our community. And Anne could probably add some things that I missed if you had any more questions.
I want to get a better idea of where folks can go for information because we post a lot of stuff on Facebook between the police department, the city and DART, but not everyone's on Facebook. So are, are those same pieces of information available on the city's website for people who aren't on social media? Can, and if they're not now, can we please make them available? Because I know there's some great information on DART, police and the city Facebook page, but I think it's important to have that available for people who aren't on Facebook. Thanks.
Chelsea can add a, a lot to that if you would.
Yes. So we are definitely updating the website as much as we can to match what we're running on social media. And um, David Spear, I just want to give a shout out to him. He has been single-handedly updating all of our web communications across all platforms and doing an excellent job. In the meantime, editing press releases and all kinds of stuff. So, but yes, we're really trying to get the website up to date with everything we're sharing as much as we can. And then we are running ads in the Daily Press and the Mirror that are about city closure type of information or really pertinent type of information as much as we can, bearing in mind that those things can change day by, day by day. So we're doing all of those um, different ways of notifications. And then in the utility bills coming out here shortly, will be a CDC um, guide to COVID. So that'll just be about health, um, a hundred percent about health, but keeping people safe. So that'll come out in the utility bills at the beginning of April. And other ideas on getting the word out would be great. Um, if people want to share them, we can also run a radio spot that's about city operations as well. Right now, we're just run, running the economic development one.
I was just reading a comment from Judy, it looks like. Um, in addition to what Chelsea was just saying on the information, we're gonna, we've been posting information related to the, the uh, governor's rules that keep changing. So we'll make sure that we get that up on the webpage more often and, and easier to understand as well, or maybe we'll do a summary of that. Cause I know for Blaine and I and others here, we've been trying to keep up with that and understanding. Uh, a good example, a question came up about uh, a feed store and, and that may have shut down in a neighboring town. There was no need to close that down. The governor specifically exempted uh, livestock feed stores from being shut down as well as pet food and those types of things. So uh, we need to probably do a little better and we'll work on that as a team to summarize these things, to put it in, in layman's terms so people understand a lot of the language that's being used. It's confusing to, to those of us who are used to reading some of this stuff. So I can only imagine if you're not used to reading it. Uh, so we'll work on that and try to make that a little better.
Do, have we, if we've covered most of the information, do we want to talk about loans for business? Is, is this the appropriate time?
Yeah, if you're ready, I can um, let you know what staff is, is asking council to consider and, and see if council would be willing to, to do this.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, some other cities are starting to talk about this very thing. Uh, on the listservs, we're, we're starting to hear Grand Junction just passed some things. Some towns on the front range are starting to, to make some decisions. So one way, if we look at the bigger picture on how can we help all the different types of business situations right now? We've mentioned a couple already. So the businesses who want to stay open um, approached us and have talked to us, and that really prompted us to do the deferral of sales tax remittance for those businesses that are trying to stay open, that will help them stay open. So then the question came up, well, what do you do about the ones who are mandated to close? So the hair salons, the nail salons, the small entrepreneurs, the sole proprietors who do personal services and those types of things. Uh, they were closed down by the state and, and the city had to enforce that. And so we, we tried to come up with a proposal that would help those businesses pay their fixed costs. So even though they're shut down, they might still have a mortgage payment they have to make. I know a lot of the utility companies, including the city, are not doing shut offs, but they're not necessarily just waiving all of your bills. They're just pushing it into the future and, but not all landlords are going to be that, that way. So we know people have fixed debt, they have money they borrowed to start their business, and maybe the banks aren't letting them not make their payments. And so how do you help them? So when we're all past, hopefully what doesn't last longer than ninety days, um, they can get back and running as quickly as possible and, and rebuild the backbone of our economy, which is really our small businesses, and get those up and running and we can be as successful as we were within twelve months. So the idea is uh, we have money available in our budget uh, in our funds. We had the DDA uh, that was dissolved and we had leftover operational monies that we had in that account. About a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is sitting in there. Uh, as a reminder, the operational monies from the DDA is what the city council used to go along with the donations of Save the Sculptures to purchase the sculptures downtown. As well as to fix the safety issue with the tile that was all broken up in Centennial Plaza. And then to solve some safety issues for pedestrians on Main Street, uh, put in lit crosswalks at a couple of different locations with the flashing lights. And so that money, um, there's still a hundred and twenty-five thousand left in those funds. We also have the Downtown Revolving Loan Fund that's been in place uh, since two thousand and twelve. And we have about seventy-five thousand dollars sitting in that account. And we have about a hundred thousand sitting in the Greater Montrose Opportunity Revolving Loan Fund. So we have a total of three hundred thousand dollars that wasn't budgeted this year, but is sitting in those reserve accounts and can be accessed for small business assistance. And that's what the money was really uh, created, created for. So we would ask council to consider uh, allowing us to utilize that money and put it to use through a small micro lending program, very similar to our existing revolving loan funds, but in a more flexible capacity than our traditional lending program. We know that the SBA is passing down federal money. That's being uh, housed over at Region Ten, and Region Ten is providing business loans through the SBA program. But there's interest rates attached to that. Uh, they're decent interest rates. I think I heard around four percent. Uh, but it's still interest. And so we would ask that we utilize the three hundred thousand dollars to create this at a zero percent loan program with no repayment due uh, within the first twelve months. And so they could, that gives the businesses twelve months to get reestablished before they have to start making payments. And then we charge no interest because the city doesn't really need to make a profit off of our businesses. Um, it would just be the, the time and cost of processing. Uh, and then start repayment based on the needs of the, each particular business after a twelve month period. And it, we would throw it out uh, that it's open to all of what council would want to do, but maybe we could do it up to five thousand dollars per application. Uh, in a really simple application, we'd have Region Ten do the credit check uh, and the quick processing for us. So there's a third party. It's not just the city doing that. And uh, that's what we've been doing with our normal revolving loan funds. Region Ten, Dan Cinto has done the credit checks for us and, and given us red flags if we shouldn't loan to somebody. But for the most part, um, we're all in a really high-risk environment anyway. With the pandemic, there is some risk that you loan money to someone and then they don't reopen their business and they don't have any ability to pay us back. That's a legitimate risk. So I'm just throwing that out there for discussion. See, see if you like that idea. If you want to, if you like it, but you want it in a different form, uh, no decisions at all have been made. Just wanted to bring it up and, and see what you uh, would find palatable.
So Bill, one of the biggest changes would be in the past when we've loaned money to businesses, it's been specifically for improvements to the facility such that at a later date, if the business isn't there, that money has still improved their doorway, their awning, their HVAC system. And this is very different in that this money would be available for businesses to help make their rent payment or their payroll so that they could try and get through this as best as possible. Is that correct? So that they could try and get through this as best as possible. Is that correct?
Yes, our, the city's philosophy for many years has been reinvesting in our community's infrastructure and in our buildings. And so when, when we've talked in the past many times about incentives, how do we help businesses? Almost always we do property improvements or building improvements. Or we give a loan for those types of projects. We don't usually give loans for inventory or things that can walk away when the business were to leave. We want to invest, we've been wanting to invest in the property itself because it stays behind. But in this case, we're talking specifically for operational monies. To make their, their payments, to, to just keep their business afloat while they can't operate. And then they come back and start operating in full capacity. So it's totally an opposite philosophy from what we've been operating in.
I agree with that. I think it's a good idea. Having vacant buildings with a nice front isn't going to do us any good if we don't have businesses in them. I support it.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea as well, Bill. And I, I don't know if you've talked about like where the businesses are, if there's any kind of limitation. I would think it'd be citywide, but maybe address that and also if there's any kind of other restriction besides just the, the credit check that Region 10 would be doing on our behalf.
So far, we've talked about it being citywide. So it doesn't matter where your business is. But the number one restriction that we're recommending is that you have to be a business that was closed by the governor's order. So it have to be a mandated, a mandate that you closed your business. We've already had people hearing rumors about it and that, that, you know, it's a small town. So everybody hears things even before it gets city council, unfortunately, but I was asked by a medical provider who does therapy type services, who's had to downsize. And they are feeling the impact and nobody's leaving their house to come get services. And so they've had to downsize, lay people off and their revenues are down. I think if we, and I talked to that person and when I explained the philosophy of I think we need to first prioritize and deal with who's been shut down completely as the low hanging fruit. He was very open to that and understood that we have to prioritize because we don't have millions of dollars to hand out. And there's really no practical way that the city of Montrose can help every single person in our community during this crisis, unfortunately. We're trying to offer help in many, many ways. And we're relying on nonprofit partners to do the same and the county and other, like the rec district. But there's no way we would have enough money with 300,000 to help every business. So that's why I was thinking we focus first on the mandated. And I think that makes a lot of sense. But if we ran out of $300,000 in a week, council would have the ability to pull money out of our surplus if you wanted to do that moving forward. If this thing lasts longer than 90 days and we end up six months down the road and everybody's still closed and not allowed to go out and shop and do different things. We could have a different discussion, but right now we, none of us really know what's, what's going to happen in the future. So this was just an idea to get us started.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea. I'm sorry I talked over you a couple of minutes ago, but at any rate.
We're getting used to that on these things. That's normal.
I, I, I think we should move on this quickly and not, not deliberate on it for two or three weeks.
So Bill, I, go ahead, Judy Anne.
Um, Bill, could you tell us again the amount of money that you would, we could give or loan to each business?
So I was just throwing out there up to $5,000 per application based on their impact. So that'd be part of what we would need to set up with Region 10 is on the screening side of things. And I know Dan and Nancy over there would have great ideas for us. If Chelsea and I met with them in the next couple of days to fine tune things, if you like the idea of moving forward. How do you screen out somebody who is used to receiving, and I'll just throw out numbers. Say it's a business that's used to getting $10,000 a month versus a business who's used to making 500 a month. You can't give both of them $5,000. So we would want to come up with a way to base the amount of loan offered to that business and tie that to their amount of need. Yes, maybe they show us their last year's tax return. So we know the region sees it, but we know how much money their business is used to bringing in. So we know the impact. But we're open to any ideas on that. That was just a that would be 60 applications if they all maxed out at 5,000.
I think that's a great place to start. And then I think we ought to be nimble enough to pivot if we need to expand it, increase it, or go to our reserves for more money.
Bill, I like this idea. Procedurally, is it possible for council to take a vote on this this evening? And I do want to let the public know that is listening. I am going to open up this to discussion from the public. Council certainly wants to hear from the business people that are on this Zoom meeting, what you think about this. So we will give you an opportunity in a moment, but Bill, if you could maybe walk council through procedurally, how we could do this. I know we have a meeting scheduled for March 31st, if we could move on this. And I don't know if this takes one vote or if we have to take two votes. But I would, I would like to see the process begin this evening if, if that's okay by charter and ordinance and our rules. And I miss Stephen may need to weigh in on this also. So please give us some direction on what legally we can begin to do. And then I'm going to open it up to the public.
I, I think if we had majority of council tonight that wanted us to move forward with putting particulars together, we can throw that on next week's agenda because it's just a few days from now. It's Tuesday. And for the formal vote and adoption. And then we would be able to work out the details of Region 10, have the application, be able to provide all of that to city council when you're making your decision on Tuesday. And then the way we're cutting checks at the city, they're going to be done on Thursdays for accounts payable. So we could have applications that are turned in by Wednesday and the check cut on Thursday. So we'll be able to turn this money around really quickly. So I don't think waiting till Tuesday is a bad thing because we're going to need a few days to work out details anyway.
Very good. I'm going to add council, I'd like council to speak and then I am going to open it up to the public. I missed that Barbara. Barbara, Bynum?
Does, does that give Region 10 enough time and paperwork is due Wednesday? And we're talking about cutting checks Thursday because you said something about that.
I would say when I mentioned Wednesday, it would be a completed approved application. So it's going to take, we haven't talked to Dan in detail about it yet unless Chelsea did today. It's going to take two to three days probably to look at the financials, get it approved through Region 10 and then be ready to cut a check. But once we have that approved to us by Wednesday, we can turn around the check the following day. If that answers your question. Which is a lot better than the unemployment. I mean, there's a lot of these ideas that have been great that are coming down. And, and they're getting better as time goes on. But last week, when we were talking about people getting their unemployment checks, it was going to be five to six weeks before somebody could actually get their first unemployment check. And now I've seen that the governor and the state is really working to make that much more efficient. And it's going to be just, you know, a couple of weeks before they, they get their money. And, and the same with the SBA lending, you still have to qualify for SBA lending. Not all of our small entrepreneurs are going to qualify for that type of lending. It still has red tape and it still has interest rates attached to it. And so ours would be much more fluid and, and flexible.
I'm going to ask each council member if you have something to say. And then I would like to get the public involved in this discussion. Roy, any other comments?
No, I, I support the notion as Bill described it. And I think deliberating a week and then voting next Tuesday is a good idea. I support that.
Judy Anne?
I am supportive of the idea, but I, I agree. I do not want to take a vote tonight. I want to know the details. I want to know, you know, more about this and what we have right now. But thank you, Bill and Chelsea for coming up with this idea.
Doug?
Yeah, I support it and I go along with what the rest of them have said.
Barbara?
I support it and I'm glad we're looking at ways to help our businesses.
Thank you. I'm now going to open it up to whoever's in the audience that might like to speak. Yvonne, I've seen you type a couple of things on. If you would like to speak to us, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, as I just said in my comments, I think you just need to give it a few days to stew on it. I think it's a great idea. The small businesses are really going to need that kind of help. Rent payments, maybe even utility payments are critical for them. So yeah, it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Wait, wait to vote on it.
Yeah, at this point, I, I don't think we can take a vote on it tonight, but we can give direction to staff to begin to put something together. So we have something to consider seriously on the 31st.
I have a question if I might.
Go ahead.
So my business is ski rentals and sporting, which this wasn't directly shut down, but the ski resorts have been shut down. And all school events, including their sports, have been shut down as well. Since I haven't been directly, like my store specifically been shut down, but all my sales around the stuff that's been shut down. Can I qualify for this?
Okay, I assume this is Rewind?
Yes, this is Shane from 970 Sports Rewind.
Hey Shane. Bill, do you want to comment on that?
Sure. So like any of these things, there is a little bit of room for interpretation. I think we would need council's advice today or next week on who our loan review committee would need to be. Maybe we have one council member on there with our current loan review committee plus Region 10. My recommendation for, based on your specific business, how I would handle that application as it came in is because the ski resorts were shut down specifically by a governor mandate. And if you could show us that through your financials to Region 10, that your revenue during ski season was from ski rentals, which we rent from you. So I, I know what it is. That would definitely be eligible. Because there's a direct nexus to he shut down your business, basically. That's a little different than somebody who does therapy, therapeutic massage or something like that, that is based on post-surgery rehab and those types of things. Little less of a direct nexus than your particular business.
Thank you so much for clarifying.
Thanks for the question.
I mean, not necessarily because the bulk of surgery, therapy are, are, are not. So I mean, I think in a lot of ways, a lot of businesses tied back to the governor's shutdown orders. I think that's something that we can, can
I agree. I mean, that, that's the difficult thing is that, that's the difficult thing with how do you, how do you do that? And we're open to
I think you're just, you're trying, you're trying to weed out someone who just decided, you know what, the heck with it this month. I'm, I'm just going to close and go on vacation. We're trying to weed them out from being grant eligible. Is that correct? I mean,
Yes. And if Region 10 looked at the financials and there's $5 million in that business's bank account versus somebody who has no savings account whatsoever and they're going to go under. I think the person who doesn't have any money and who's going to go under is going to receive preferential treatment over somebody who has tons of liquid assets they can use during the difficult period.
Thank you.
Mr. Merrick, can I address Judy Anne's comment about she would need to see more information?
Absolutely. Please do.
So Judy Anne, I think we need to know what that is that you want to see. So we bring that to Tuesday. If you need to know more information before making a decision, what information do you need?
Just those things that you talked about, Bill. I, the, the, the details. Is it going to be exactly $5,000? Is it going to be more or less? Is it going to be all businesses or the ones that have this financial meeting can show it?
What would you prefer? Do you have a preference on those? Cause we're taking our guidance from council on that.
Well, my initial instinct was that $5,000 isn't very much. But I don't, I'm not too sure if see what we're actually talking about. If we're talking about a hair salon that needed to close, maybe they can't pay their rent. So maybe $5,000 would be enough to get them through two or three months. I don't know. That's just kind of our purview that I don't know about, Bill.
When we talked to business owners who were on Main Street, that's kind of where we, we were kicking around 2,500, 10,000, 5,000. We heard 5,000 would be enough to be impactful to somebody to get through a few months to pay things like rent or even if they wanted to pay a couple of their employees who are out of work or pay utilities and those types of things. That's where the 5,000 came up. If we go to 10 or 25, we're going to go through our pot of money really, really fast. Maybe we need to have the ability to apply for additional funds after a certain amount of time. I'm really open to any suggestions on those things.
It, it seems to me that Dan is kind of an expert and and maybe Chelsea, and perhaps they can like give you a little bit of guidance and suggestions. I think your idea, I mean, if, if one business is really hurting and maybe they can't apply for a second one, a month or two down the road. I think, you know, it's hard to make blanket rules that cover everybody. And, and so some flexibility and the opportunity to take individual situations into account and still be fair to everyone. I I don't exactly know how to do that, but, but I'm saying that there probably are some people who are very good at this and Region 10 is a great resource.
Yeah, I definitely see the dilemma of what should the cap be? And, and as Roy said, I think that there's some people out there that can help the city decide what a good figure is. Probably nobody's going to agree. We can't, we're not going to get everybody to agree on one number. So we're going to have to just come up with the best advice we can from Chelsea, Dan, Region 10, whatever we can to, to put that figure together.
Thank Yvonne's com- comment. She typed in was showing some information on what the rentals were. That I think if we can gather a few more of those, so we have a, an average, that would be helpful also.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. We'll talk to Dan from Region 10, get some information. That, that helps us from Yvonne on the average rental amounts. And then we'll also reach out to DOLA and see if DOLA's, because I know other towns are working on this too, and DOLA's right in the middle of that. So we'll try to get recommendations from them on, on that amount and process.
Uh, Bill, I think for somebody to qualify for these loan grants, we need to have some information from them. But I think that needs to include what they plan to use the money for. I wouldn't want to give somebody $5,000 and then have like Barbara said, they take it and go on vacation. I think we, they have to have a viable need for the money.
Yeah, that would definitely be in the application would be what, which is the same for our existing revolving loan fund. The name of the business, what's your business, prove that you're an actual business. And then probably share your access to your credit history with Region 10. And then what exactly would you use the money for? And Region 10 may even ask for some financials from the last year. So if you say I need 5,000 a month for utilities, but Region 10 sees that it's only $190 a month, they can call you on that. There's a question in the, from somebody's cell phone, it looks like. Are there any restrictions for auto repair shops? And I think that's one of those things. And I think that's one of those things where we can help by summarizing the governor's orders. Mechanic shops are actually a critical business that are not to close. And so uh mechanics, uh auto supply shops, hardware stores, anywhere you can go and buy appliances or get appliances for your home repaired. All of those things that you need to uh maintain equipment vehicles or your daily life are considered critical businesses. And they're exempt from the closures. But again, if you just decided to close down your shop, even though it wasn't required, then I think that's the difference. That's that dividing line between I chose to close versus I had to close. We have to draw the line in the sand somewhere.
Do we have any more comments from the public? Any other thoughts, any ideas that we haven't covered? David Stockton, I guess your microphone's not working, but thanks for the comment. Do we have some emails coming in, Bill?
No, I was just reading those. I think we've covered all the questions that I can see.
If there are.
David, sorry, uh, David Stockton asked about the money that wasn't uh, the money we deposited in the capital fund, the seven hundred thousand ish at the budget time. He asked if that would be eligible and I responded typing that that's in the capital fund. And so um by using it out of our, these other dedicated business funds first seems to make sense. And then if we need to tap into more funds, we have funds available to do that. But right now I'd just be utilizing the uh, the funds that were already dedicated to small business.
Good idea. So at this point, we have three hundred thousand dollars that that we can use. And council can add to that at some point if that's the decision council makes.
Yeah, uh, Community Foundation included a accountability matrix for uh small business grants and loans to ensure that the money money that was spent is being spent on the exact item that they say it's going to. So that's kind of a added layer of safety on there. We could include that on the loans to make sure that the, we get receipts back showing that that's what they spend the money on.
Thanks, Dave. We'll reach out to Sarah uh tomorrow.
Anything else from the community? Counsel?
Yes, I, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is uh Kim Bulk with the Camp Robber. Hi, Dave. Thank you guys for everything you're doing to uh help small businesses. I appreciate it very much. Um, I raised my hand back. I just would like some clarification on the comment about the sales tax deferral. Um, the first part of that talked about deferring that that Bill Bell mentioned. But then when he started talking about this loan program, he said it would not apply, the deferrals would not apply if the business was already closed. Well, our business is closed because we couldn't stay viable doing takeout only. So does that mean the sales tax deferral? Even though I just paid it on Friday, but the March sales tax that's due in April that could be deferred, I can't apply for deferral because I'm closed? I'm confused on the clarification, please.
Hi, Kim. Totally.
Hi, Bill, thanks.
Two totally different programs and projects. So the the sales tax deferral uh for Marches and Aprils and and if we did ninety days, so March, April, uh, you would definitely qualify for that. That would, that's, that's different than the uh the applications for the small uh businesses that were mandated, the personal service type businesses.
Yes, and I I realized that, but you had made a comment about it would not be available. The sales tax would not, deferral would not be available if the business was closed. When you started talking about this other, and that's when I, my ears perked up, I said I didn't hear that um in the first part. So I just was asking for clarification. Super, thank you so much, Bill. I appreciate that clarification.
Sure. And I, yeah, I think I was saying, uh, we're trying to keep our restaurants open as long as possible, but some of you did have to close down because your business model doesn't. And I know that um, staff had talked to you about that last week.
Right. Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Thanks, Kim.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the public? Counsel, any final comments? Bill, anybody?
No, well, my understanding is we have majority of council that wants us to move forward, get this on the agenda for Tuesday for formal adoption and work through some of the details right away with region ten and Dola and Community Foundation and and have something good that you can vote on on Tuesday.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. I just want to say to the community, number one, thanks for everybody that tuned in. Uh, so you can get the accurate information as you talk to your friends, your neighbors over the next couple of days. Please let them know that you listened to our meeting, tell them what we're doing. Uh, if there are questions, they can get hold of me, they can get hold of Bill. Uh, we're all here to help the community get through this. Uh, again, remind people, support small business where you can. Get out and enjoy the sunshine. There are things you can do without having to be in a group. So take care of yourself. Um, we're going to get through this and I know we all can't wait at this point till we get back to normal and we will get back to normal. And with that, unless there's anything else, if council's ready to adjourn.
Do you want me to make a?
This is all new territory, but that's sort of your job, so.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say that. Beautiful. Thanks, everybody. Have a great evening. Let's all stay in communication. I know we will. And uh be looking for an email from Bill uh very soon with some of the details that we'll discuss next Tuesday. But thanks, thanks so much to staff. Steven?
I just want to say this has been a fairly incredible meeting. So uh, thanks to everybody that participated.
Thank you. And I don't know who turns this thing off. Uh, Greg, I think we're finished, so.
Leave that to me. You guys just uh drop away and I'll, I'll take care of the rest. Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Much. Thanks. Bye.